Good evening and welcome to the October 7th Regular Town Council Meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag, to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Chair President Phillips.
Present.
Counselor Sims.
Present.
Counselor Willis.
Present.
Counselor Cooch.
Present.
Counselor Gagnon.
Present.
Counselor Lavoie.
Present.
Counselor Segal.
Present.
All right, we'll move on to the acceptance of the minutes of the September 2nd 2025 Regular Town Council Meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Zero second.
Second.
Any changes, any comments, all those in favor? We're now going to move on to open public communications. This is a time for members of the public to speak to the council on items that are not on the agenda tonight. So if anyone would like to come up and speak, we're going to do about three minutes. We do have a timer, and if you could just state your name and where you're from.
Okay, I'm not a public speaker, so I'd rather have a root canal than be up here, but I feel this is important. Please forgive me, I have a vocal cord issue. I also, it's a result of an asthmatic crisis this past two weeks, that's why I'm here. My name is Nicoletta Dalton. I live at 99 Gateway Commons Drive here in Gorham. I've lived there since 2002. If I look through the stand in my backyard and look, I can see Dolph's home, just to give you a reference where I'm located. I have asthma. That's when the lining of your lungs become inflamed, then they start secreting a thick mucus. Then your muscles start tightening up in your chest, in your airway, and it can go to crisis, and you can lose your airway. And as you all know, for a person to live, you have to apply the ABCs, airway, breathing, circulation. You will start to cough, you will start to wheeze, and you can't breathe. On September 25th, that's what happened to me. I lost my airway. It came on not suddenly, it kind of developed, and I had to go to urgent care because I couldn't talk. I got dizzy from the lack of oxygen, that's how fast my airway was shutting down. It took three nebulizer treatments to open up my air passage so I could breathe again. I left there with a prescription for two weeks of steroids, which I'm still on, and most people know steroids are not fun. And I deal with a very difficult health problem. It's kind of comparable to COPD, emphysema, cancer of the lungs. You're trying to breathe, you're trying to get air in. So the quality of air is very important to me, very, and it's critical to my health. This is what I'm breathing. This came off my windshield. This is just a little piece and part of what I'm breathing. It's in my trees, it's in the bushes, it's in the flowers, it's in the cars, it's in the house. To go outdoors, this is what I have to wear. What about our children? We have lots of children at Gateway Commons. Please, Town Council people, please address our air quality. My health is being impacted by your decisions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Peggy Olson, I live at 9 Aspen Lane. Nine years ago, upon our retirement, my husband and I purchased and moved to our home on Aspen Lane. But my ties in Maine go back to 1974, so even though I'm relatively new to Gorham, I'm not new to Maine and the way life should be. We've had nine earthquakes in our area in the past 365 days. The one centered in York, which at the epicenter was a 3.2, is what many of the Brickyard Quarry blasts feel like at my house. Neighbors on Aspen Lane and Little River Drive have similar experiences, and it's my understanding it's even more intense for the abutters. As of 2023, the state of Maine had listed at least 600 actively licensed quarries. Gorham has 10 pits. In doing some research on my own, I discovered basic state regulations are primarily set for quarry operation standards, but few standards that address the needs and protections of the communities and their residences. State leaves it to the municipalities to set their own requirements. In its data collection, Maine does not differentiate between quarries in residential and non-residential areas. This is why I believe there's so little regulation at the state level regarding quarries in residential areas. Probably a significant number of Maine's quarries are in non-residential areas, so it's considered a non-issue. In addition, the state's current emission and dust monitoring requirements do not include so-called fugitive emissions created with trucks traveling in and out on the site, the stockpiles moving and using materials on-site, which is considerable. So those numbers of what's coming out are only higher. This was observed firsthand during a recent sidewalk that we had. In addition to that, studies have shown that over time blasting can have a cumulative effect on structures and ground movement. Most of Maine's health-related regulations refer to workers, not nearby residents. The few governments' acceptable risk standards for communities are based on models and not actual community data. Significant health issues relating to blasts and asphalt fumes include silicosis, lung cancer, COPD, heart disease, stroke risk, reduced kidney function, with children, the elderly, and people with pre-existing conditions at greatest risk for these conditions, as well as exasperation of their own conditions. Long-term noise exposure has its own set of issues also, ranging from hearing loss, tinnitus, physiological stress, cardiovascular disease, et cetera. In the town's comprehensive plan, Chapter 4, the community vision states, "Our vision of Gorham is a neighborly community, the most desirable place in Maine to live, raise a family, or build a business in a healthy, robust, and aesthetically pleasing environment."
Ma'am, could you finish up your comments?
Yes.
Thank you.
It's time for Gorham to put their money where their mouth is. The vision as it relates to neighbors of the town's pits is rather fictional. A complete review and overhaul of the town's mineral extraction ordinances is long overdue. The best way to effectively and completely do this process would be to enact a moratorium on any newer expansion applications until updates can be completed.
Thank you.
I'll finish there.
Thank you.
Ken Curtis, 118 South Street, 50th floor, year taxpayer. My wife is very quick to say silence means you accept it, whatever it is. So I'm saying I don't accept all this building that's going on in the town. We're talking literally at this point thousands of new homes that are going to be built. I don't know why we can't say no, why we can't stop this, slow it down. So I'm not quiet. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Good evening. Hi David, how are you? My name is Donna Lance, and I live at 25 North Street. My husband and I moved there in 2011. I also am not a public speaker, and would rather be getting a root canal. I'm here tonight to speak about some safety concerns. Our bridge on North Street further up Buck Street, so I live on the end closer to Ware Butler and 114, but further up on where it turns to Buck Street, our bridge washed out earlier this year, and there have been some different rumors circulating around the neighborhood about when it will be rebuilt. We heard that it would be postponed until like a June referendum, I think, 2026, and that the earliest wouldn't be rebuilt until next August, but then we learned recently that I believe it's going to be on the November ballot as a bond issue, part of a bond package or something. So we heard that we were, you know, advised to come to this meeting to raise our concerns, express our concerns, but I know some other neighbors were told they were advised to wait until the November meeting. Some of us decided to come tonight. Our concerns mostly are about speed, safety. It's been an ongoing issue on our street, like many streets around town. When we moved in, the speed limit had just been changed from 25 to 35, and GPS a few years later started sending everybody down the street, and it's a great bypass to avoid downtown congestion and getting, just avoiding that. So we understand that, and I do miss having the bridge there. I like going up to Standish that way, but I like the peace and quiet and the safety. Safety really has been a big concern. People go 50 down that road. The speed limit was initially set at 25 because we're a residential area with dense, you know, we have houses close to the street, there's lots of families with really little kids. We've had the police outnumbered times. So in 2021, I walked around our neighborhood on a broken foot getting signatures for a speed study. I spoke to several people in the town about it, the guy in Scarborough, Randy Illian with MDOT, who said that it would take at least a year to get a speed study once never been done. And anyway, it's just been an ongoing issue. So I collected 35 signatures from just our stretch of, between 114 and Spiller Road and the stretch of Buck Street up to Parsons Farm. Everybody I spoke to, it was a long process just going from house to house, hearing everybody's concerns and their near misses, being pushed off the road, almost hit by dump trucks, just numerous scary stories. It's kind of a miracle nobody's been injured or killed on our, on our street. But anyway, so we're just here to express concerns. So some people want the bridge rebuilt, some don't, some want it built with conditions that we can do something to address the speed. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Erin Murphy, I'm at 30 North Street, and I just want to underscore what Donna has just said. Our street is a delight right now with that bridge out. Neighbors are meeting each other, kids are out playing in the yard without fear of chasing a ball into the street right as a car barrels past. It's quiet, it's neighborly, it's lovely. I personally would love it if the bridge was never rebuilt, and I'm a little frustrated that nobody came and talked to us about it, or any kind of a study was mentioned about whether to even bother rebuilding it. It's clearly going to be a very large expense when taxpayers are not really in the mood for paying more taxes. So I know we're a little late because it's on the bond, it's on the bond issue, but I just wanted to express that, and I have two other members of our neighborhood here with me as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Usually we just have, no, there's only, yeah, you can feel free to contact us, email us, let us know what you wanted to say in addition. Anyone else? All right, seeing no one, we're going to move on to Counselor Communications, and I will start on my right with Counselor Segal.
Thank you Chair. For me, I want to wish a Happy New Year to anyone celebrating Rosh Hashanah. We had a lovely time at our house, and as well as, you know, an observant Yom Kippur. The other thing I want to state was a PSA. If you're not aware, the impact apparel bins that you see around town, so there are some outside of Ace, there are some in the Chick Drive Municipal Parking Lot, those are for clothes that are trying to divert from the landfill, things that have holes, things that are worn out, shoes that are completely gone. Those, the things you put in the impact apparel bin do not end up being donated and given. Those, they end up getting, taking what they can from them, and then the rest is discarded. So if you're looking to actually, if your stuff is usable, you can donate to Goodwill, you can go to the Goodwill By the Pound, or the Goodwill at the Village Mall now also takes donations, but I've been hearing from a number of people that they've been thinking that the impact apparel bins are for donating clothing, and that is, that is not what that is for. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Sims?
Nothing to report.
Counselor Lavoie?
Nothing to report.
Okay, moving right along, Counselor Willis, go ahead.
Just a reminder, this will be our last opportunity to be together before the upcoming election on November 4th, so just encourage people to get out and vote and have your voice heard.
Thank you. Counselor Cooch?
Nothing to report.
Counselor Gagnon?
Thank you. I'd like to take this time to thank Counselor Lavoie for his service on the Town Council. Whether he attends the last meeting or not, he decided to not run for reelection, but he was a real bright spot on the council, and I want to say thank you for your time and your friendship on the, on the council. So, thank you. One piece I did wanted to note, the number of e-bikes that I'm seeing in the community is escalating very quickly, to the point where I think the middle school sent out a note and said, "Please do not ride your e-bikes on campus anymore. Walk them to school if that's how you're commuting." The problem I'm seeing with these is there's a lot of young children riding them at excessive speeds with no helmets, no protective materials on, and they're getting distracted very easily by looking another direction and veering into oncoming traffic. I should know because I almost hit one. And I will tell you, it is the most frightening thing in the world to see the kid that you're coming down the road, and you're stopping and slowing down, and they're veering right into you, and then they pull into their other side. So I'm asking if you're on an e-bike, or an electronic scooter, or anything else, please obey the traffic laws, please use caution, and please use the correct materials to help prevent any additional damage in an accident. So, thank you.
Thank you. I guess I'll just say good luck to all the candidates in the upcoming election, and I do want to let everyone know that since Election Day is the first Tuesday of the month, we generally push our meeting to the next Tuesday, but that turns out to be Veterans' Day this year, so it's a holiday. So we've decided to meet for a special meeting on Monday, the 10th, to have our organizational meeting and our swearing-in of the, of councilors, only because our council rules and our charter require us to meet within seven days of the election to swear in councilors. Our regular Town Council meeting will be November 18th, which will be the following Tuesday, just to keep on the Tuesday schedule. So we'll try to get that out there so that people aren't confused by what's going on, but we felt that was the best way to handle that. So I guess I'll turn it over to our fill-in Town Manager, Community Director Tom Poirier.
Good evening, I'll try to do my best Eiffel Impression. Couple items, so first, if you utilize the town's website and you go to our ordinances, we have a new website, it's called Ecode, it's the way we present our website, or, excuse me, our ordinance stuff, and it's to consolidate and makes it easier for searching. If you have any questions regarding this new system for ordinances and how it's laid out, please reach out to the Community Development Department, we'd be happy to help you out. Phone number's 222-1620, or you can contact, send me an email, we'd be happy to help you out. A couple other items, Public Works, they started to bring in winter sand, even though it's warm out right now, winter's just around the corner, so they're starting to bring in the winter sand and finish up some paving projects. The Rec Department, they have Fall Fest coming, which is Saturday, October 18th, 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. The location is in the gazebo right out here, next to Baxter Memorial Library. There'll be pumpkin painting, cookie decorating, petting zoo, food trucks, music games, and activities. So Rec is putting that on. And one other item from Rec is congratulations to Cindy Hazelton, she won the 2025 David F. Drew the Third Service Award. For those who don't know what that is, that's an award University of Southern Maine gives out, an award is given annually to, by the Department of Athletics to someone who distinguishes themselves with volunteer service to the athletic department, so we congratulate her on that award.
Any questions for Tom?
One thing, sort of a question, actually something I forgot to mention, just a thank you to town staff, particularly Public Works. The new sidewalk from 202 to down Access Road towards the high school, and a crosswalk across connecting at the ball field, looks really nice, and obviously provides some additional safety for folks on foot. So, thank you for that.
Counselor Segal?
Director Poirier, potentially through to the Town Clerk. When does absentee voting begin? When do we have early voting?
You can absentee vote now in the Clerk's office, and there'll be absentee voting here in the Council Chairman's starting October 20th.
Okay, October 20th to start voting in here.
Through Thursday, 7:00 a.m. till 5:00, and then the next week, Monday through Thursday, 7:00 to 5:00.
Okay, and you can pick up an absentee ballot at any time at the Clerk's office, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Or online as well.
All right, we'll move on to the School Committee Report. We'll have Michelle Littlefield come up.
Hello, Michelle Littlefield, Vice Chair of the current School Committee. You all should have received my report on your chairs before, before the meeting started. So first, just wanted to start off sharing our thanks to our first responder partners here in Gorham. We're incredibly lucky to have the strong partnerships that we have between the Police Department, the Fire Department, and the others that we have here in Gorham. As you all probably are aware, there was once again, this was demonstrated again last Thursday, a situation where we had for a second time to close our schools, put them in secure status. That was Village Elementary, GMS, and GHS. This was due to police activities in the area. And as always the case, our communication with GPD was exceptional, and as a result, things went very smoothly, as smoothly as possible, and we maintained safety for the children at all times. Moving on to our next item, the Gorham Schools are still looking for two full-time maintenance employees, and we're always looking for bus drivers and substitutes. If you know of anyone who might be interested in these positions, please have them go online and apply. For those who may be interested, just a little bit to entice you here, minimum pay for maintenance workers would be approximately $27.16 per hour with full benefits. Minimum pay for bus drivers is $24.39 an hour with full benefits and a $2,000 sign-on bonus. And then finally, our daily pay for substitutes is $150 per day for certified teachers, $140 per day for those having completed our sub-training course, and $125 per day for all other subs, with an additional $10 per day if you happen to be substituting in a high-need special education classroom. We are still working to finalize enrollment, so October is the time of census, but we have until the end of the month to have those finalized numbers. So the preliminary numbers have been shared with you in our report. GHS is at 855, GMS 685, Great Falls at 413, Narragansett at 518, and Village at 373. That totals 2844, if my math is correct. So always keep in mind that that includes our pre-K students, so if you're looking back historically for the comparison, there's 120, 123, excuse me, of those students in the count. And once we have the count finalized, you'll have the final number. The number is not final until we finish that, that up in the month of October. Another reminder, fall athletics are in full swing, and all of our teams are representing our community so well. If you haven't been able to get to a game, we highly recommend that you try to make it out there. The atmosphere is amazing, the students are working really hard to represent us, and you can find all of the game schedules on our website, or you can search for the new GHS Athletics app in the App Store to follow all the action there. Quick reminder that there are two bond-related questions on the November 4th ballot coming right up, one for the town to fund some culvert repairs, and one from the school to reallocate funds already approved to support three additional programs without requesting more funding from the community. So please be sure to get out and vote on November 4th. And just a little added commentary from me, just a reminder, again, a thank you to all of those people who participated in the Fiscal Sustainability Committee, the folks that had conversations, that we're now seeing movement where we've, we're able to stretch our dollars further. It's much of a positive request coming from the School Committee on that item. Homecoming weekend is up, is coming up soon for GHS, so just a reminder about some dates. The week of October 13th is where we'll be having our pep rallies and other fun events planned at the high school. That weekend, the 17th and 18th, where there are also several athletic events as part of homecoming, all of it culminating with the homecoming dance on October 18th. So it's a great week to show your school pride and your community pride, so feel free to help do so by showing off school colors that week. Another reminder on dates, there will be no school Friday, October 10th, due to a Regional Professional Development Day for teachers. There will also be no school on October 13th due to Indigenous Peoples' Day, so please plan accordingly. We also added a reminder in there that Wednesday, October 22nd, is an upcoming early release, so just a reminder to the folks downtown. And you all just reminded me that we probably should note here as well that November 5th, the schools will be closed to students that day as well. So that's noted on our academic calendar. And then finally, last item from us, is that we wanted to just give a shout-out to all of the great candidates running for the Town Council and the School Committee. It was great to see the attendance at last week's candidate night at Baxter Library. The discussions were really thoughtful around meaningful topics. It was a great way, we think, to show our children how the local community's democratic process should work. So thanks to all of you who, who've shown that you're willing to step up and serve. As you all know, public service is no easy task these days, but it makes that more important. So thank you and good luck to all of those running on November 4th. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I'm flying solo tonight, so I'll do my best here.
All right, any questions? Go ahead, Counselor Cooch.
I had asked once for this to be in the report as well, but is your regular meeting tomorrow at 7 o'clock?
Yes, it is, yes, and the location should be on the agenda. We did make the request to make sure that that was published.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Counselor Sims, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the report. A bit of a question, and a moment to provide some information to the public, in the name of our efforts, the spirit of our Fiscal Sustainability Committee. It notes here that there's 123 students included in this year's enrollment numbers that are pre-K students. So by my math, the total K through 12 enrollment would be 2,721. Is that roughly accurate?
It sounds about right. It still can fluctuate until they have that final number that they publish for census, but it sounds right.
Great. Thank you for clarifying that. And just for the public's edification, one number that I've put to memory recently, Gorham's K through 12 enrollment in 2003 was 2,755. So that's actually higher than this year's enrollment number. I've heard a number of people around town saying, "We can't allow any more housing because we're adding so many kids to our schools." This is an inaccurate statement, the data does not support that claim. People are having fewer kids than they did 20, 30 years ago. The people that can afford- people that can afford to buy the homes in Gorham are often beyond childbearing age, and they're paying for their houses with cash. And in fact, the cost of housing has far more to do with our budget challenges than than the school population. If you look at over that same timeline since 2003, the value, the average value of a house in Gorham has nearly tripled. So not to belabor that point, but just a moment to share some data with the public. Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's a good call out. I think I would, I agree. I think we've talked about this before as a group, that our enrollment numbers have been relatively stable. I would not discount that, in my opinion, we still have 123 additional bodies in the buildings. And so when we get to talking about the impact then financially or all the nuances about enrollment numbers, I think you make the point you make, that it's not cut and dry, is the best point that can be made, so.
Thank you.
Councilor Willis, go ahead.
Just before the question I was going to ask to clarify the point you just made, the 123, they're not just in brick-and-mortar schools that we provide, right? They're also in other private-public partnerships.
Right, that, yes. And I don't know the number off the top of my head that would be housed in Narragansett. I just don't remember that capacity. But yes, we do have external sites, but I believe we have to, we report that number holistically because they are enrolled in our program.
That makes sense. I was going to ask a very similar question to Councilor Sims, and he happened to have the number memorized from a number of years ago. So kudos to you. But in terms of possible homework or requests, if it'd be possible for November, I'd love to see the stats and actually like break them down, enrollment. I was thinking high school as a standalone and then below, because I know that, you know, the schools were different 20 years ago in terms of the structure than they are right now, just so that we could kind of read those into the record moving forward.
So enrollment numbers historically by school building?
I wrote down 96, 06, 2016, and 2025, 2026, just kind of going back each 10-year segment. Would be my request if possible.
I love data, so I'm going to request it. Yep.
All right. Anyone else? Councilor Gagnon?
I did note that the theater was absent in this communication from the school board. Usually they give a time to advertise the upcoming week, I think of November 1st, school play that's coming up. It's our town is the first one, and then the musical. So if by chance you remember, if we could just add those, that would be great.
Yeah, that's a good point. I didn't notice that that was missing, but I don't know that that was brought forward by our students in our last report either. So we can check the dates, but if there's something upcoming, we'll make sure that that's added. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Public hearing number one on item 2025-10-1. Public hearing to hear comments on renewal applications for automobile graveyard junkyard permits for 2025-2026 administrative sponsor.
All right. Public hearing number one is now open. If anyone wishes to speak on this item, please come to the podium. Seeing no one, the public hearing is closed.
Proposed order 25-105, order that the town council renew applications for automobile graveyard junkyard permits for 2025-2026 as follows. Steve Luce, LKQ Corp., Gorham Auto, 192 Narragansett Street; Marty Allen, Casco Federal Credit Union, 375 Main Street; Gary Nelson, Chet's Auto Sales, 475 Osippe Trail; Sean Moody, Moody's Co-Orca Owned, 200 Narragansett Street; and John Bumbrowski, Dumbo Enterprises, 86 Longfellow Road.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Second by Councilor Sims. This is just a legal requirement that we approve these applications. So we all have the documents in front of us. Councilor Gagnon, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There's one that stuck out. So the Casco Federal Credit Union, is that a new one?
No.
I remember seeing that one.
No, they bought, the lot that they bought had a, had a junkyard on it, and they kept the license going since then in the back. Correct.
Oh, wow. Okay. So it is a new name.
No, it's always been Casco. It's been Casco probably like five years, but they bought, and I can't remember the.
I can't remember the name neither. Can't remember the name of the lot.
It was the old rental place in the front, and I can't remember. They had a junkyard in the back. B&amp;M, that's correct. B&amp;M Rental.
Any other questions, comments? All right, all those in favor? Seven yeas.
Public hearing number two on item 2025-10-2. Public hearing to hear comments on a proposal to amend the town's general assistance ordinance by updating the maximum levels of assistance as required by the state administrative sponsor.
All right, public hearing number two is now open. Anyone who wishes to speak on this item? Seeing no one, the public hearing's closed.
Proposed order 25-106, order that the town council amend the town's general assistance ordinance by updating the state's level, maximum level of assistance as required by the state.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Voie. This is exactly what it says. It's a requirement by the state, but I don't know if you have any other comments?
No, we typically do this on from occasion, and this is just the time it's up. So council needs to act on making the proposed change.
Okay. Any questions, comments? All right, all those in favor? Seven yeas.
Public hearing number three on item 2025-10-3. Public hearing to hear comments on a proposal to amend the land use and development code, Chapter 1, Section 1-25, South Gorham Commercial Corridor, C, dimensional standards to set a minimum amount for non-residential in a mixed-use building and mixed-use development administrative sponsor.
All right, public hearing number three is now open. Anyone who wishes to speak on this item should come to the podium. Seeing no one, public hearing's closed.
Proposed order 25-107, order that the town council amend the land use and development code, Chapter 1, Section 1-25, South Gorham Commercial Corridor, C, dimensional standards to set a minimum amount of non-residential in a mixed-use building and mixed-use development as follows. Section 1-25, South Gorham Commercial Corridor District, dimensional standards. Mixed-use building, a minimum of 50% of the gross floor area shall be utilized for non-residential uses in a single-story structure. In a multi-store building, the first floor shall be utilized for non-residential uses, with all upper floors being allowed for either residential or non-residential uses. Mixed-use development, a minimum of 60% of the gross floor area shall be utilized for non-residential uses in a development to be considered a mixed-use development under this section. Notwithstanding the provisions of this subsection D, an auxiliary public unit utility structure is exempt from the minimum lot size and street frontage requirements of this district. Structures must meet setback requirements. Additional screening and buffering can be requested by the planning board.
Is there a motion on the item?
So moved.
All right, is there a second? Second by Councilor Sims. I'm going to ask Mr. Poirier to.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Really, this is as simple as it says, is just identifying standards for mixed-use development. As we started to go through projects in the South Gorham Corridor, commercial wasn't clear, the percentages for mixed-use development. I think when the council originally wrote this proposed district, it utilized some information from North Star. Staff went out and they got some more information from North Star, what those percentages should be for mixed-use development. This is their recommendation. Planning Board reviewed it, recommended the changes, and I'd answer any questions. Council has.
Anyone have any questions, comments? All right, all those in favor? Seven yeas.
Public hearing number four on item 2025-10-4. Public hearing to hear comment on a proposal to amend the land use and development code, Chapter 1, Sections 1-11, 1-12, 1-13, 1-21, 1-22, and 1-27, to add indoor/outdoor recreation facilities and similar commercial-industrial permitted uses administrative sponsor.
All right, public hearing number four is now open. Anyone wishing to speak on the item, please come to the podium. Seeing no one, public hearing is closed.
Proposed order 25-108, order that the town council amend the land use and development code, Chapter 1, Sections 1-11, 1-12, 1-13, 1-21, 1-22, and 1-27, to add indoor/outdoor recreational facilities and similar commercial and industrial permitted uses as follows.
Like, Councilor Chair, I'd like to make a motion to waive the reading due to its length.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Second by Councilor Willis. All those in favor of waiving reading due to the length? Seven yeas. And now we just need a motion on the item, please.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Willis. Yep.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, I think this is an effort by the council, as well as I believe the Gorham Economic Development Corporation do look at adding flexibility to a lot of our commercial districts. This is a step into making that happen. So these proposed uses were viewed by the planning board and recommended the changes as proposed in the agenda this evening, and I'd answer any questions you have.
All right. Any questions, comments? Councilor Segal, go ahead.
Thank you. When the ordinance committee met, we decided as a committee to strike out the language on the indoor shooting range. And I'm noticing, seems the planning board put it back in. Is that what this says?
They recommended adding it to one district. So the old, I believe it's in the Old Canal Industrial District, and then just having the definition to go with it. So they only added it to one district, and they they thought, one member of the planning board, if I remember, is thought it would be important to have that used at least someplace in town, so you don't have people going out and shooting where they shouldn't be. So at least having a use, and if a business wanted to locate in one district, he thought it was appropriate. And this gentleman seemed to want that kind of use in town.
Any other questions?
Can I clarify your question, or ask a clarifying question? Did, were you striking the definition, or were you striking the use coming out of ordinance? Was that the recommendation coming out of ordinance?
It was the allowed use. We didn't, yeah, we didn't have it in any district.
Comments? Go ahead.
I'm going to make a motion for an amendment to, sorry, does this need to be amended to remove that language?
Yes, if you want to remove endorsement.
I'm going to make a motion to to amend this to remove the indoor shooting ranges from the Old Canal Industrial District.
Is there a second?
Just a point of order. Can we, if I, if I second it, we can discuss it? Is that, that's what happens?
Yeah, and then we'll have to vote on it. Yep.
Yeah, I'm willing to second it to discuss.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so second by Councilor Sims. All right, so the amendment is to remove that language from, what did you say?
Old Canal Industrial District.
Okay, remove the use. Any comments, questions on the amendment?
Madam Chair, if I may, real quick, can, can Tom show us on the map that's over there where where this would be? The map's over there, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah. I know where the map is. I already scoped it out beforehand. Just so the people at home understand, and if there's any residential butters or.
Old Canal. The Old Canal Business District is this gray district right here. It encompasses nine lots, and most of them have already been developed. I think there's two or three vacant lots in that proposed subdivision.
Okay. Any other comments?
I can just say, the reason I'm bringing this back up, because, well, with our initial discussion at the ordinance committee, it just felt like it was, we just didn't want to have to deal with what might be potential issues from that type of business. I know in town, we don't allow certain type of businesses where we think that there just might be more logistical headache coming from it. So that was my initial thought, and that's why I'm bringing this amendment here.
A question for town manager. The, have we had interest from individuals that want to put a facility in?
I would say like three or four years ago, someone was looking to do one in New Portland Parkway, and they just never moved forward. We were looking at adding then, but the applicant didn't move forward with that proposal.
And presumably, if if we were to approve this tonight, and a number of people became concerned about this, it could always be proposed to remove this use in the future just as easily as it was added. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, I would, my only thought, the only comment I would just be, you know, I think the, I'm glad that we've, that we've got some additional uses that we're adding here. The the goal of this is to add to the potential uses, so there are more potential buyers and users of these land, which thereby increases the value of the land, presuming that there are uses that have relatively high value in terms of the buildings that might get built. So I think I'm willing to vote in favor of what the planning board suggested, despite the prior conversation at the ordinance committee meeting. But I would certainly encourage, if there are residents who are concerned, that they, that there is now, you know, such a use permitted in a particular area of town, then they should make that, bring that to our attention and make us aware of it.
Thank you. Councilor Gagnon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I didn't think, when this went to ordinance, that we were expanding it beyond looking at other commercial opportunities that were going to increase tax value. I don't know how much tax value would be gained from an indoor shooting range. Tom, Mr. Poirier, what would your estimate be on a square-footage facility that would do that and its value?
I don't think I could, I'll break out some, I'm just trying to think of some that are located in the state. I know Howells in Gray has an indoor shooting range that's right next to the interstate. I don't know what, if there's any noise issues coming out of that. There's another one in Wyndham, I believe.
I would just add that I'd, I'd like to encourage us to add more uses that are higher value than the ones we've got added here, for sure. So, you know, I'm a little torn on the, on the shooting range one, just because I recognize it might, you know, concern some people. But I would encourage anyone who's concerned about it to to bring it to our attention.
Any other questions, comments?
I would make the comment, I've never been to an indoor shooting range or an outdoor shooting range, so I'm not really qualified to speak to, you know, the impact that that would have on the area. I'll ask the question that I already know the answer to, but to Director Poirier, if somebody proposed a shooting range in that area, there would be a process that would play out, that would include public input and planning board and questions and.
That's correct. So if you look at the definition, that will be included in, as part of the proposed amendment. So it defines it. The other thing is, we have noise standards as part of site plan. They would need to meet all of those. So our understanding is, if an indoor shooting range does go forward with the technology now, it would be pretty quiet and hopefully self-contained. That's why it's just identified as indoor shooting range, not outdoor. That's a whole different ballgame. If you've driven to the Scavo ones, yes, you can hear their aways. This is just an indoor one, a little bit smaller.
So I would echo Councilor Sims' point that, you know, I'm okay approving it tonight. I'm also interested to hear if there's public input that is against this as a permitted use in Gorham. And I think to Director Poirier's point, there are some vacant opportunities out there. So the more chances we can give for businesses that want to fill those, the better, that we're not 100% capacity right now.
All right. All right, so we're ready to vote on the amendment to remove the language and the shooting range from the Old Canal Park. All those in favor? One. All those opposed? Six. All right, so we'll go back to the original item. Any more discussion on the original item? All right, all those in favor? Seven yeas.
Item 2025-10-5, action to consider recommendations for awarding allocations of the capital expenditure matching grant program administrative sponsor. Proposed order 25-109, order that the town council authorizes the recommended allocation amounts to 11 Gorham businesses and farms: Parsons Maple Products, Sebago Lake Ranch, Microwave Technologies, Odat Machine, a division of Hawa Labs, Wallace &amp; Company, Pipe Organs, Goodfellas Barber Shop, Miller's Market, Ryse Personal Training, Sullivan House, Bigger Strength, and White Elm Dermatology, as outlined by the Gorham Economic Development Corporation's Review Committee for a total of $55,000 in grant funding.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
By Councilor Willis. This is pretty self-explanatory, but I'll have Director Poirier.
Yep. Thank you, Madam Chair. Yep. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm gonna give a quick introduction, but there is the Kevin Jensen, Economic Development Director here, to answer any questions you have, as well as one of the review committee members. We'd like to thank the review committee for going through these applications. A little bit about, this is the second time we've done this grant program. We started in July 2025. Really what we're doing is, we provide up to 12,000 in matching funds for eligible business and farms through this program. It's a competitive program. We also like to thank Main Community Bank. They pitched in, I think it was 10,000 as part of this, 55,000. So great partner in the community. And these are the proposals that the committee is recommending. And again, thank everybody who's, one, applied, and two, for the committee and their hard work in choosing these. I know it's not easy going through those review applications.
All right. Any questions or comments? Council Kush?
Yeah, I was just wondering, without having to go into detail about each and every one of them, is there a general idea, like, some grants weren't because, were they paperwork issues, or didn't meet qualifications? Because it says there were 15 applications, and then not 15 companies. I was just wondering, just a general sense of what makes someone not get one?
Well, we had a scoring criteria. So with the, all the process that Peter and the two others from the review committee, they were given a scoring criteria to read through all the applications and score each one according to, I believe it was maybe three, four different areas. And then those were given a point scale, and then that was all accumulated for all 15 of the applications. And then we went from there in terms of the strength of overall applications.
And the 55,000 was the target number?
That was the total amount that we had available to allocate. So then there was some horse trading, so to speak, on what we could give on each one.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Yep, go ahead.
I'm wondering, do other towns in the area have similar programs, or are we unique in offering this kind of CapEx grant program? I can't say for certain. I know other towns have, say, like, a facade improvement program. So I've seen that happen with, in Portland, Freeport has done similar programs. But a program like this, no, I'm not familiar with other towns having something like this. So it's more of a response to what we're hearing from the businesses in terms of, they have ideas on how they can expand. They put forward a strong argument, and then they're allowed to take the matching funds with matching funds from themselves to move forward with an idea that has maybe been on the shelf for a couple of years, but now with a little bit of a boost, they can move forward with that and expand.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah, just to echo what Mr. Jensen said, sometimes small businesses just need a boost. And I'm really happy that we're in, this is year two, right?
Yep.
Yep. I hope to see this continue on in the future, should the town be able to fund it. It's a great commercial town partnership. I'm just, I'm glad we're doing this.
Go ahead.
Council.
Yeah, I would just add, I've talked to a number of these businesses that were excited about the possibility of receiving this money, and it makes a huge difference. So, you know, what we're doing with this really matters, and I just couldn't be behind it enough.
Council Sims, go ahead.
One comment, definitely supportive of approving the funding. And one thing, just maybe to think about, we're in year two now. Maybe think about possibly, like, a couple of metrics we could track to be able to demonstrate, hey, listen, here's the positive impact we're having here, and maybe just some specific success stories with some of the awardees, you know, a story in the Gorham Times about, you know, hey, here's how this investment helped this local business, and here's how that's helping the local community. Like, I think little things like that could go a long way.
Yeah, that's in the works. We had hoped that some of the businesses that have, that benefited from the last grant cycle could be here to speak directly to you, but it's a busy week for many of them. So unfortunately, they weren't here. But that's in the works to get the word out about this program, what the benefits and the impact have been. So thank you for the support.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, all those in favor? Seven ayes.
Item 2025-10-6, action to consider amending the bylaws of the Gorham Economic Development Corporation, Council Philip sponsored. Proposed Order 25-110, order that the town council approve of the amended bylaws of the Gorham Economic Development Corporation to allow for one board member to be a non-resident business owner.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Voi. I sponsored this item. The Gorham Economic Development Corporation has discussed this, and they wanted to make this recommendation to the council. I was, to be honest, skeptical at first, because I like to keep all of our boards, you know, residents of the town, but it's a little, it's somewhat harder now to find somebody who is a business owner. And we've had a lot of interest from business owners, but they're just not residents of Gorham, but they own a business in Gorham. So this was why they brought this up. So for the council to decide if they want to change it. Go ahead.
Would just, just to add on to that, it doesn't mean that the committee will choose a non-Gorham resident over a Gorham resident. Just opens it up to a non-Gorham resident.
Correct. Any other questions, comments? Go ahead, Council Kush.
And this is one person out of how many?
Nine.
Nine?
Nine.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Council Sims?
Yeah, one other clarifying question. So as of now, to be, to apply for a position on the Economic Development Council here, Corporation, you have to be a resident of Gorham. Do you have to be a business owner?
No.
No. And what we're proposing here is that someone who is not a resident of Gorham, but is a business owner of a business that operates in Gorham?
Yes.
Okay, that was one thing, just from the way it's written, it doesn't explicitly say that it needs to be a Gorham, a business operating in Gorham. I might suggest, if folks are, I would consider revising it to indicate probably that. Although, I know, I think I heard a couple of the conversations that maybe, maybe that's not what's desired. Maybe they would like to have a business owner from another town potentially be on the corporation.
So I'm going to ask the GEDC member that I see in the audience if he would like to comment. If he doesn't want to, he doesn't have to. But if you don't mind commenting, sorry, Pete.
Oh, that's okay. Peter Mason, GEDC. I think to start with, I think if we can just start with a non-resident Gorham business owner, and then see how that goes, and then if we want to expand from there.
Okay.
Because I think, you know, a lot of us residents that live in Gorham, I think we have some great ideas, but I think there's people from outside the community that could bring new ideas to our group. So that was kind of the reason behind our thoughts.
Thank you.
And Pete, that came from what? That came from that joint meeting with Scarborough, correct?
Correct. And Kevin, is it Freeport that has?
Freeport.
Yeah, Freeport has a non-resident on their board as well. Yep.
So just to clarify, if I was to propose an amendment to just clarify that language, a non-resident who runs a business that operates in Gorham, the GEDC would generally be okay with that as the proposal?
I think so, right, Kevin? Yeah, I think that would be fine, Lou.
Right. Thanks.
Yep.
Well, in that case, I'll make that, I'll propose that amendment. So we would revise the language slightly, so that we would clarify that we would allow for a non-resident who... Operate, yeah, who is a Gorham, who is an owner of a business that operates in Gorham?
Can I take a slight stab at it?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So to allow for one board member to be a non-resident owner of a Gorham business with a physical location in Gorham.
Let's do that.
Rather than operates in, but a physical location in town.
Okay.
Shall we repeat it one more time?
Yes, please. Yes, sure. To allow for one board member to be a non-resident owner of a Gorham business with a physical location in Gorham.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second between the two of these.
Yes, that's right.
All right. All right. All those in favor of the amendment? Seven ayes. All right, so the item now, as amended, to add in the Gorham business owner. All those in favor?
Uh, sorry, Chair. I just, so the GEDC is technically a separate entity from the town, correct? It is a separate entity. It's a separate corporate entity. I guess this is a question for confirmation.
Yes, like quasi-public.
Right, but it, yeah, but it is not like our other committees that are strictly within kind of town.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah.
Chair, if you want me to answer that, I did a lot of...
If you want, we'll let Council Seagull finish his...
Yes, I just wanted that confirmed, because I know, after three years on the Appointments Committee, we've had a conversation about non-residents. So I'm okay with adding this specifically for the GEDC, because it is a separate entity. But I want to be very clear that none of our other committees allow for that. You have to be a Gorham resident to be on any other committee that we have.
Thank you. All right. All those in favor? Seven ayes.
Item 2025-10-7, action to consider approving an economic development strategic plan administered or sponsored. Proposed Order 25-111, order that the town council adopt the economic development strategic plan as presented by Camoin Associates and North Star Planning.
Motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Council Gagnon. So we did have a workshop that the public can view regarding the economic development strategic plan, so that people can view that. So we're not just rubber stamping something we haven't discussed before. But if anybody has any questions, comments? On the council? Council Sims?
I did have a couple of questions. I just wanted to kind of get a better understanding of, if we vote to adopt this, approve this, what exactly is the meaning, like, what exactly are we greenlighting by doing that? I mean, we've got, on the digital documents, we've got the 155 slides that Camoin Associates shared with us. 100 of those or so are just appendices and data points. But a good portion of those are, there's a lot of information, there's some kind of high-level goals, there's a more kind of specific action plan that is relatively detailed. So are we, like, saying yes to everything in all of those slides? Like, what's the action?
So I think that what we generally do when we do strategic plans, or anything, a master plan, anything like that, it's our guiding document.
Okay.
Because we're, you know, for the future. And I think that this allows staff, correct me if I'm wrong, Tom, but, allows staff to kind of go forward with some of these, or bring these up and talk about, and recommending some implementation.
Okay.
So we're not rubber stamping that all these things are going to happen tomorrow.
Okay.
Much like the comprehensive plan.
That was a question I had. So things that are in here, and I mean, and there's a lot of good ideas. I mean, I think there's, you know, there's, there's something in here for everybody to like. And just a question of, so the town, if we say yes tonight, then the town will know, okay, we can start pulling from some of these things to bring forward to the council for, hey, this might be one that we want to try to prioritize. Would that be accurate?
Right, yep, that's accurate.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Council Gagnon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I brought this forward in preparation for the comprehensive plan as a document to reference and be able to help guide, you know, thoughtful discussion as to where and how we want to do things. Instead of piecemealing a zoning map, or doing contract zones, this is a more organic and well-thought-out area. One note, or one area was, industrial, commercial yields the best result for tax reduction, because there's no real services provided, unlike residential, where there's needs from individuals, or the household. So one slide that I went over with Council Voi showed that in the order, the industrial and commercial was the highest and best use for tax reduction. So I'm hoping that by looking at that, and looking at the areas that we've identified as village centers or growth centers, we can use this as a trending best-use area to guide construction and future development.
Madam Chair?
I think, I think that we can all debate this all night long. The point back and forth, I think to your point, you're correct, that there's something in here for everyone.
Yeah.
There's parts of it that I like, parts of it I don't like. So, I mean, feel free to make a comment, but I think...
Well, I would just, respectfully, I would, I would take a different view from the assertions that were made around industrial...
And commercial.
So industrial and commercial, two different things, in my view. And so I think the slide that was in the Camoin deck there left a whole lot of nuance out. Things like value per acre, things like, there are costs, particularly if an industrial business has enormous trucks that are destroying our roadways, and the taxpayers, the residential taxpayers have to subsidize that infrastructure at a more rapid rate and higher expense. There certainly are costs associated with businesses as well. And I just, there was just a report in the Portland Press Herald, they just did their revaluation in Portland. The residential values went up far more rapidly than the industrial values and the commercial values. So if we're trying to solve our budget challenges, trying to focus on the uses that are growing at the lowest rate, and are already valued at less, I think that might be, we might want to just think about that strategy a little bit, and run the numbers a little bit more detailed. So I'm not saying it's all one or the other, I'm just saying, that's why I asked the question, I did, because I want to make sure that we're not just greenlighting, hey, just do a bunch of industrial and don't do any houses. I think that would be ill-advised. And I would like us to have those nuanced conversations before we sort of really, you know, run with anything in this slide deck.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may rebuttal the rebuttal, I guess. I wasn't making any assertions of what should or shouldn't go anywhere. But I'll remind Counselor Sims, he even spoke at this council meeting and said that the number of people that are moving here are old, or of a higher age category that don't have children. Those people will eventually move on in some manner. And so what are you going to do when you have a glut of housing, and nobody is purchasing it, because the birthing rates, per Counselor Sims, are down? Well, that's where you get commercial and industrial in a mix, and you have the thoughtful discussion about how much we want to go and how far we want to go. Nobody is looking to pave over Gorham. I certainly aren't, and I, I've opposed mass developments. Well, several of you have asked for more development. Some of you weren't here during it, but I think that's part of why we're asking for an economic study, and why we want to have those thoughtful discussions, not to make baseless and, you know, inflammatory, you know, comments about a nihilistic end-world, you know, approach to development. Thank you.
All right, we're going to get back to the item of approving the strategic plan. Any other discussion on the item? All those in favor? Seven ayes.
Item 2025-10-8, action to consider approving a nonprofit childcare program grant administered or sponsored. Proposed Order 25-112, order that the town council approves a nonprofit childcare program grant in the amount of $15,000 to seedlings and sunflowers.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Willis. So I'm going to refer to Tom on this one, but I think this was something that was in the, in our budget. And we had allocated, I think, $30,000 of grant funding for nonprofit childcares. And I guess at this time, according to Efrem's notes, there's only one eligible center at this time. So I think that's the reason for the amount of the $15,000. Any questions?
I do have a question. So, thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to Acting Town Manager Poyer. So the $15,000, is that the amount of the value it would be taxed at for the building? Like, that section of the building that they're occupying? Or is it a percentage? Like, are they paying $15,000 in... Like are they paying $15,000 in property taxes? Is that how that?
So we, I think we weren't specifically looking at this specific when we designed the whole thing. I think it was because some places rent, and that rent obviously goes towards taxes. So some places don't own their own specific spots, some do.
Right.
But it was just more for the nonprofit childcare centers.
Right.
And Counsel Willis, I don't know if you have more information about this.
But Madam Chair, my question wasn't answered. So her, the section that this occupies, if they rent it, what is the amount of taxes that this is going to offset from that section? If it's $15,000 or more, I have no further questions. If it's, say, $1,000 and we're giving them a blank check of 15, then I do have some more questions. So I'd like my question answered, Madam Chair.
Yeah, I don't have that, I don't have that information about what they pay in taxes.
We could ask the Executive Director of Seedlings and Sunflower, who's sitting in the crowd tonight, if she'd be willing to speak to that.
Thank you.
I'm Megan Carrasco, the Executive Director of Seedlings and Sunflowers. We have two locations. We do own one of them. And we're in a contract zone because we're a nonprofit organization. It does not matter. We still have to pay property taxes, which was a conversation I had with Efrem about whether that contract zone should be changed, but that's a much bigger conversation. That property is around $15,000. We also rent our location over at Industrial Parkway. I think that the amount that we pay there is between $5,000 and $10,000. I could get the exact amounts for you, though.
And I would just add a little context to your question, that the origin of all of this, at the time that it was talked about with the town manager, there were two locations that were nonprofits that fell into this little loophole that because they rent, they are paying property taxes through their rents essentially instead of directly to the town, but it's through their triple net. So at that time, we had looked at their numbers and they were paying more than what the town manager set aside in total property taxes, but it was a way to try to offset some of that burden.
Yeah. Thank you. Madam Chair, I think that information should probably be provided going forward, particularly when we're looking at grants and money, specifically if this is for abating taxes.
Right.
Any other questions, comments? All right, all those in favor? Seven yeas.
Item 2025-10-9, action to consider forwarding a zoning map change coincide with the Little Falls-South Wyndham Master Plan to the Planning Board, Counsel Philip sponsored. Proposed Order 25-113, order that the Town Council forwards to the Planning Board for review and recommendation amendments to the zoning map for the Little Falls Village to coincide with the Little Falls-South Wyndham Master Plan.
Is there a motion? Motion by Counsel Sims.
Second.
Second by Counsel Seagull. So I think this came from the Ordinance Committee and not from me, so just for clarification. So I don't know who wants to speak to this. I know I went to a meeting with, that we met with South Wyndham early on, and then I think there's been other conversations. And then obviously at the Ordinance Committee. So I don't know if, Ordinance Committee or if you want to?
I'm happy to start, and then Director Poirier, if you feel I'm missing anything. So over the past quite a few years at this point, we, our Ordinance Committee and our town staff has been working with Wyndham staff, Wyndham councilors, and North Star Planning to align our zoning in that area with theirs so that when you cross the bridge, it doesn't feel like you're going to a completely different place just because you crossed a town line. So the goal here was for, as you can see, for us to have that similar red zoning in the core. So right when you cross the bridge, Wyndham will have the same zoning that we do and similar to their extension zone. This has been a, we've been meeting for, boy, for multiple years about this, probably even longer for you, Director Poirier. Is there anything I missed?
No, what I probably recommend is the council just amend the order to say forwarding a zoning map and propose Little Falls Village District changes as drafted to the Planning Board for public hearing. Just so we're clear that it's a map and the zoning district because we're changing the zoning districts in that area to provide more flexibility for commercial and residential and mixed-use development. So that language is got to go too.
All right, so it says amendments to the zoning map for Little Falls and zoning district changes. Have that in there?
Yeah, as drafted.
Okay.
I'd like to make the amendment for that language.
Okay, Laurie, do you? All right, so a motion for, to amend the language, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second by Counsel LaVoy. All right, Laurie.
And propose Little Falls zoning district as drafted.
Yes. All right, any discussion on that? Counsel Gagnon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to Counselor Seagull. Was that, that wasn't discussed at the Ordinance Committee, was it? That addendum we were just, that you're asking to be brought in?
I, my understanding is that it is, Director Poirier just wanted the language in this to note that it's not just the zoning map, but also the changes to the zone.
You're correct. The Ordinance Committee reviewed the language and the map. It just, we didn't, the language didn't include in the agenda for some reason, so we're just clarifying.
I was making sure. I did read it in the standards in the first floor as commercial. I just wanted to make sure we had gone through that piece. Through you to Counsel Seagull, more piece. Didn't we also discuss the map itself and where, I think, additional shading was, I thought you had wanted additional parcels shaded?
I am, I am pretty sure that this has the additional parcels shaded, that the deep red was smaller and we pushed it to be larger.
Correct. And we'll just confirm that as part of it going to the Planning Board, that make sure everything encompasses.
Okay.
So this should just increase density in the area, right?
Actually, so if you look at that area in red, a lot of that is, right now, residential. This allows more commercial and mixed-use development in there. Actually, it provides quite a bit of flexibility where a lot of those commercial uses in a district are currently non-conforming. This will bring them into compliance with the zoning and allow for more commercial mixed-use.
Perfect. Thanks.
Any other comments, questions? So I do want to see this move forward. We've talked about this at the GEDC meetings, about different opportunities. I do want to see this move forward, but I do disagree with the map. But that will go to the Planning Board. I don't want to belabor the point that we should. I just think that the yellow area is extended too far out, so that's the only thing that I was thinking of, so. But I can bring that.
Point of order, Chair. Are we still on the amendment?
Yep.
Okay.
So I just want to make sure that that was, those were just my comments. So on the amendment, all those in favor? And then further discussion on the item? As amended? All right, all those in favor? Seven yeas.
Item 2025-10-10, action to consider adjusting fire department billing rates, Counsel LaVoy sponsored. Proposed Order 25-114, order that the Town Council approve of a 5% increase in fire department billing rates as allowed by state statute as follows. Advanced Life Support 1, current $936.61, proposed $983.44. Advanced Life Support 2, current $1,050, proposed $1,001.0250. Basic Life Support 609, current, proposed $639.45. Care Without Transport, current $200, proposed $210. Extraction, current $400, proposed $420. Intercept Fee, current $300, proposed $400. And Mileage, current $14.70, proposed $15.44.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
By Counsel Willis.
Okay, so Finance Committee looked at this two years ago, and we started talking about it, and we discovered that the rescue fees were far below the regional average. So this is basically a continuation to try to bring us more current with surrounding communities. And Chief Fickett, give me a nod if I'm saying something wrong or right. We're not allowed to, per state, we're not allowed to go over 5% increase per calendar year. We're just continuing this increase to bring us closer to our surrounding communities. Just to note, the intercept fee, which if you're reading the agenda right here, does not equal a 5% increase, that is exempt from the 5% rule. So we're not trying to gouge here, we're just trying to get more in line with our surrounding communities.
Any questions?
I don't know what an intercept fee is.
Any questions? No? All right, all those in favor? Seven yeas.
Item 2025-10-11, action to consider setting a Town Council workshop with the Gorham School Committee to review the findings and recommendations of the Town Fiscal Sustainability Committee, Administrator sponsor. Proposed Order 25-115, order that the Town Council set a Town Council workshop with the Gorham School Committee on Tuesday, October 21st, to review the findings and recommendations of the Town's Fiscal Sustainability Committee.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Second by Counsel Sims. All right, this is just setting up our workshop. I think that everybody's, we've mentioned it several times tonight, the Fiscal Sustainability Committee. So I think that this will be really interesting to get all the findings put together. I mean, we can all read the documents, but we are going to have, I think, we're planning on having a facilitator to kind of go through those motions with everyone and with both committees. I encourage the public to either view this at a later date or attend the meeting if you can. So it should be a lot of good information for us going forward. Any questions, comments?
Chair, it feels weird to put a workshop right before an election where we know we'll at least have one new counselor, if not more, if we're talking about long-term.
And I would encourage those people that are candidates to attend the meeting to, as if they were, I mean, they can't chime in and talk on the committee until they're sworn in, so.
Yeah, day one doesn't start November 4th.
Counsel LaVoy, go ahead.
Yeah, just a comment. To your point, being part of this committee and looking at that document, that working document that's going to be presented, I urge anyone who's ever had any questions on how we got here, how the town does things, how the school does things, concerned about taxes, concerned about budgets, go, listen to the presentation, read the materials because it's all in there.
Counsel Sims?
Amen.
All right. Any other questions, comments? All right, all those in favor? Seven yeas.
Item 2025-10-12, action to set a special Town Council organizational meeting for Monday, November 10th at 6:00 p.m., followed by a special meeting at 6:30 p.m. to swear in new councilors and move the regular November Town Council meeting to November 18th due to a holiday conflict, Administrator sponsor. Proposed Order 25-116, order that the Town Council set a special Town Council organizational meeting for Monday, November 10th at 6:00 p.m. and be it further ordered that the Town Council set a special meeting at 6:30 to swear in new councilors and be it further ordered that the Town Council move the regular November Town Council meeting to November 18th due to holiday conflicts.
Is there a motion?
Moved.
By Counsel Gagnon, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Willis. This is what I spoke to before. Obviously, we just need to solidify it with a Town Council vote whenever we change meeting times and dates. Any questions? Counsel Gagnon?
Just a comment, as we look for a new council year, this is the first time I've participated in an election cycle, and none of the candidates that aren't councilors are present at any of the meetings. There's none here tonight, there's none at any of the other meetings. I just wanted to point that out.
Any other comments? Counsel Kush?
I have a question. So the organizational meeting is technically a workshop which would happen in the conference room?
Yep.
And then will the swearing-in happen here?
And then, and then the special meeting will start at 6:30, and then we'll do the swearing-in and also just the organizational piece of chair, vice chair committees.
Yep. And that'll happen in here?
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, all those in favor? Seven yeas.
Item 2025-10-13, action to consider amending the Fire Suppression System Ordinance, Counselor Philip sponsored. Proposed Order 25-117, order that the Town Council forwards to the Ordinance Committee for review and recommendation, amending the Fire Suppression Systems Ordinance to allow for one and two family unit exemptions based on minimum lot size and distance from fire suppression water sources.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right, so this is obviously taking a look at, from one of our workshops, about the fire suppression ordinance. For most of you that know, every time this comes up, I remind everyone that I didn't vote to put this in. So I am just making an attempt at removing the one and two family home exemptions or from, from the ordinance. Not looking to do anything crazy, nothing detailed, just looking to get the conversation started, ordinance. So, any comments or questions?
I would just take a moment to thank all the members of the public who attended the workshop. That was one of our better-attended workshops. I know it's a passion issue for a lot of people all across the board, and I think this is just an effort of the council to take the time to try to do it the right way as whatever we bring forward. Hopefully, you know, it's been well thought out and planned.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right, all those in favor? Seven yeas.
Item 2023-6-8, action to consider authorizing up to $10,000 for public art in Robey Park, Finance Committee sponsor. Proposed Order 25-118, order that the Town Council authorizes the release of up to $10,000 previously allocated for wood carvings for an entrance sign and bench area through Josh Landry's Custom Chainsaw Carving for Robey Park.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Gagnon.
Point of order, Madam Chair. My agenda that was sent to me in my packet is?
Yeah, that was the one that came out on Monday with the?
Okay.
With the additional?
Well, I mean, it's, whatever I, the most recent one, I still don't have.
Should be in the agenda notes.
Mm-mm.
They're both in there. We all, I received an email.
I got an email.
It was amended on the mail.
Yep.
On the packet.
Supposed to be emailed, Madam Chair.
All right, so this is coming from Finance Committee?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll have the tag in. So staff's been working hard with the Finance Committee. We've been working on this a while. It's interesting trying to get artists to give us proposals to do art. So we, staff, as in myself and the Recreation Director, have been trying to reach out to some kind of carving, typically chainsaw carving. We reached out to five or six, super hard to get ahold of them. We finally got in touch with this gentleman, does amazing work. He just did one, and I think it's in Skowhegan that he just completed, is looking, is excited to do something for Robey Park. As we detail here, it will be some kind of bench system that will be carved, that he understands it's in a park for kids, that it needs to be able to be beautiful but also rugged and sturdy. And then the other part is some kind of entrance to the park, whether that's a sign or some kind of feature that draws attention to the park. So we're hopeful with, with the work going on there currently. If you haven't been out there, there's a lot of playground equipment going in. It's currently, hopefully, slated to be done in the end of October, beginning of November will be done with a water feature. And then the next year, coming in with this art should be a nice finishing to the park or good start, and we're hopeful for things to continue with the master plan.
All right. So any other, any questions, comments? Counsel Seagull?
I'd like to thank Town Staff and the Finance Committee for, for this motion. It is, I've, and I want to specifically acknowledge Counselor LaVoy, who I have expressly annoyed to push and push and push to get this thing over the finish line. And so I'm so, so, so happy to see this here. So thank you very much, Counselor LaVoy, and to Town Staff, and really the rest of the Finance Committee, too.
All right, any other questions, comments? All right, all those in favor? All those opposed?
I'm just abstaining. I didn't get it.
All right, one abstention. Counsel Gagnon?
Follow the rules.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
There you go. We're leaving it up to you. There you go. All right, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Seven yeas. Seven yeas. Thank you.